I don't hear anybody. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
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 Now I can hear you. And Annette, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. So, welcome, everybody, to the July 23 regular meeting of the Calaveras County Planning Commission. And I think maybe Brett will lead us in the pledge of allegiance today.
Let me do this first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the religion which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Yeah, that's always a little tough.
No, let's see, we're still Zoom, and that's what's getting recorded, so it's fine. Thank you.
So go out, okay.
Do we have any agenda changes?
No, we do not.
Great, then it is time for our general public comment period. Opportunity for the public to address the commission on any matter of interest and jurisdiction to the commission that is not posted on the consent or regular agenda. California law prohibits the commission from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency. Five minutes per person, and anyone who is interested in speaking should call one of the numbers up on the screen right now and make sure that you mute any other versions of this that may be running in the background, like YouTube or... And we'll give it a few minutes.
Why I want YouTube on the top of the screen?
I want to be able to see my...
I think you need to draw those little squares on.
Like watching a pot boil.
Yes, we do have someone calling in for a public comment, 772-0708. Go ahead.
Yes, good morning. This is Colleen Platt with MyValleySprings.com. Are you hearing me?
Yes.
Thank you. I would like to make a comment and a request. I wanted to note that if the public wants to submit comments via email to the planning commission or planning department with attachments, for example, if we wanted to comment and submit photos or a document with our email, we cannot submit those comments on the planning commission webpage because it doesn't allow attachments. And secondly, there's no email addresses provided for the public on the website or on the planning commission agenda or on the staff reports or in any public notices in the newspaper. So the general public does not know the county email address, and they don't know the protocol for naming to send an email to a commissioner or the planning clerk. And we would like to request that this information be made available to the public so that they can find it easily on the website and on the planning commission agenda. The county email address is kind of long and complicated. It's not something that somebody would just know, and the general public doesn't. So we would like the planning commission and the planning department to make it easier for the public to know how to comment by email and where to send their attachments. If you could make that information available publicly on a regular basis for people, we'd appreciate that. Any questions or anything for me?
No, thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you very much for coming. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Yeah, I'm just looking at it, and I don't see a way for them to email directly. So that maybe is something we should address. Are there any other public comments?
I don't see any.
Then I think we can go ahead and move on with our agenda. Next item is the consent agenda, but I don't see any items. So we will move on to the 2020-003 zoning amendment for Eric Bottomley, and I believe Mr. Spear will be leading this discussion.
All right, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hey, everybody, see my PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay, so as you said, this is Project 2020-003, which is a zoning amendment for Eric Bottomley. The parcel in question is located at 330 Main Street in Murphy's on a relatively flat 1.4 acres in the corner of Main and Church Street. The project is a zoning amendment to realign the zoning of the parcel, which is split zoned between C1, our local commercial zone, and R1-10,000, which is a single-family residential with a minimum 10,000 square foot requirement for new parcels. The current zoning boundary runs through an existing single-family dwelling, and the purpose of this amendment is to move the zoning boundaries through all residential structures around the portion of the parcel zoned R1. Here's an aerial view of the property. As depicted here, the current zoning boundary runs through the house. The proposed change will pull the zoning boundary to an existing wall and fence line, getting the house fully within the R1 zone area. Any zone change must be consistent with the county general plan, and the general plan land use designation for the subject parcel, shown here in the center of the screen, there, is historic center. The historic center designation, as described in the general plan, identifies a compatible residential and visitor-serving mix of uses that preserves and protects the historic core of existing communities. Compatible zoning districts and historic center are R1, R2, R3, C1, and CP. Both the zones in question, C1 and R1, are compatible with this land use designation. As I've already mentioned a few times, the property is currently split zoned between C1 and R1. The R1 zone is a residential zone intended to provide for land for single-family residential neighborhoods and houses on individual parcels, and as such, single-family dwellings are a primary permitted use. The C1 zone is a commercial zone with its purpose and code being to provide areas for small-scale retail and service businesses. A single-family dwelling is not allowed as a primary use unless you have a conditional use permit. The purpose of the proposed amendment is to locate all currently existing residential structures on the portion of the parcel zoned R1. As you saw earlier, the current zoning boundary runs through the house and a residential outbuilding. Because the single-family residence is not allowed by right use in the C1 zone, the portion of the resident zone C1 becomes an existing non-conforming structure. Existing non-conforming structures are prevented from being enlarged, extended, reconstructed, structurally altered, or reoccupied unless land use permits are obtained or the owner is granted special permission to do so by the planning commission. Altering the zoning to reflect the existence of a residential structure on the parcel gives the property owner greater flexibility to utilize and maintain his residence. The current zoning in the area is a mix of commercial and residential zones, and the proposed change does not conflict with the current land use pattern in Murphy's. As far as SEQA is concerned, this project is exempt pursuant to Section 15305 of the SEQA guidelines. This section exempts minor alterations in land use limitations on parcels under 20% slope if the action does not result in any changes in land use or density. The zoning amendment does not result in a change in land use, as is amending the zoning boundary to recognize the current uses that exist on the property. And the more intensive commercial zone is being reduced in size, therefore, the proposed amendment will not have a negative effect on the density or future uses of the parcel. To summarize, this project is a zoning amendment to realign the zoning boundary on the split-zone parcel to recognize the uses that currently exist on the property. Both zones in question are consistent with the general plan and are both compatible with the surrounding area. This project is also exempt from SEQA. As such, staff recommends the planning commission adopt Resolution 2020-013, recommending the board of supervisors define that the project is exempt from SEQA and to approve the zoning amendment.
Thank you. Have we received any correspondence on this item?
Like, comment from agencies or the public?
Yes.
We've got standard comments from some local agencies, but nothing from the public, no.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Scott before we let the applicant speak?
I do, real quick. What's the current slope on the property right now?
It's just under 3%. Best I can tell, I did some rough calculations, I got 2.9%. So whatever it is, it's way, a long distance away from being 20%.
Okay, thank you.
It's right downtown, almost flat. Anybody else? Mr. Bottomley, would you like to speak?
I want to just say thank you, Scott, for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Any questions for Mr. Bottomley? Then we will close the public comment portion of this hearing and bring it back to the commission. Any further discussion?
So I'm not sure that you actually opened it to the public. You asked Mr. Bottomley to speak.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You are correct. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak? Thank you, Peter.
I'm not showing any public comment.
Thank you. Now we'll close this and bring it back to the commission for any further discussion or questions for staff.
I have a suggestion on the resolution, but that can wait if you want.
I think we're probably ready for that.
Okay. Under the number-one finding about SEQA exemption, after the first sentence in evidence, apparently, thanks to council's suggestion, we probably should put in "the parcel has less than 20% slope."
Will do.
Thank you, Julie. I have no other suggestions.
Any other questions, discussions, suggestions?
Not for me.
So it does appear that we are short Commissioner Worcester. So should we be offering Mr. Bottomley the opportunity, or at least informing him that this will require a 3-1 vote? And asking him if he would like to proceed? Since this has come up a couple times. Mr. Bottomley, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, are you willing to go ahead and proceed, knowing that we only have four commissioners here today?
I think that's fine.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, would someone like to make a motion?
I move that we adopt the resolution as amended.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Commissioner Fiorino. So we'll go ahead and do the polling. Commissioner Ladish?
Aye.
Commissioner Fiorino?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Plotnick, aye, and passes unanimously. Thank you.
Supervisor, or sorry, Commissioner Plotnick, just an FYI that in our planning commission hearing procedures, under 3D, it says if only three commissioners are present for a hearing, a continuance will be granted by right if requested by an applicant-appellant or appellant prior to commencement. So, I mean, I guess you have discretion to let them know at the beginning, but it's not mandatory that we continue.
Thank you. And I guess that's something we should be letting everybody know of today, just that that there are only four of us, but let's move on to the next item. Item 2, 2020-013, conditional use permit for Olive Crush Farms provisions. And...
I would like to make a statement before we proceed, and then make a statement here. I just wanted to state publicly that I know the applicants, they're my neighbors, but I have no financial interest in this project whatsoever, so I will not be recusing myself.
Oh, Commissioner Fiorino, do you know whether you're within 300 feet of the property?
No, the... I'm in Burson, the property is in Valley Springs, so...
Okay.
Miles away.
They're residential neighbors, right?
I just know the owners are my neighbors.
Okay.
The project is not my neighbor, the owners of the project are. So I'm not within the, I'm not within 300 feet of the project, but I just thought I should state that I do know the applicants. But like I said, I have no interest in the project financially or otherwise.
Is Mr. Pitt with us today, or who is going to handle this item?
Well, Mr. Pitt is here. Let me go check and see. Maybe he is trying to tell you difficulty logging on. Hold on.
Thank you. The joys of virtual meetings. There he is.
Hey, everybody. Sorry about that. Small computer glitch, imagine that. Let me get my volume turned up. Is everybody hearing me okay?
Yes.
Excellent.
Yes.
Okay, so we have got Project 2020-013, which is a conditional use permit for Olive Crush Farms provisions. The applicant is requesting to convert a part of their existing retail space into a local beer and wine bar. I will admit that when the original notice went out for this project, I erroneously called it a tasting room instead of a bar. However, because the tasting is not provided by the producer of the wine or beer, and because the wine and beer may be sold by the glass, the operation is classified as a bar by the California Department of Beverage Control in the county code. Wanted to make that, get that out of the way, first of many corrections on this one. Go ahead and get my slideshow. Okay, as you can see, the address for the project is 8 California Streets, Suite C in Valley Springs. So it is on the corner of California Street and where Highway 12 and 26 converge at the four-way stop. General plan land use designation for the parcel is historic center. And the parcel is actually split zoned, much like the last one. With the majority of the parcel being C1, local commercial, and a small portion of the southeast corner being zoned C2 PX, general commercial. The existing market and proposed bar are located on multi-unit commercial, located in a multi-unit commercial building, and all improvements will be entirely within the C1 section of the parcel. And as you can see here, the division of the zoning designations on the parcel and the location of the project, hopefully you can see that fairly well, it's kind of small. The C2 section of the parcel is right where the red outline is, and the location of the proposed bar is roughly right where the yellow outline is located on each of those pictures. Okay, project description. The existing use of the suite that the applicant currently occupies is a small market features locally-produced goods. The market will remain open, and the applicant would like to develop the adjoining empty suite into a local beer and wine bar, which, like the market, will showcase locally-crafted beers and locally-produced wines. A bar is a permitted use in the C1 zone with the approval of a conditional use permit, of course. Other uses within the multi-unit retail center are a Realtor's office, a massage therapist, a chiropractor, a taken-bake pizza place, and of course, Olive Crush Farms provisions market. The owners of the building actually operate the Realtor's office in the building, so we know they're on board with the project. And I did not receive any response or comment of any of the other businesses or property owners in the area. General plan land use element says that the county should encourage the renovation and reuse of underutilized and vacant parcels, buildings, and retail centers. And by allowing the renovation occupation of an existing vacant space in a retail center, the county would be doing precisely that. Proposed improvements are entirely interior in scope, and the change of use for the suite in the retail center does not necessitate a change in parking standard. The building already meets those standards with 11 dedicated parking spaces, including 3 ADA spaces. In addition, there is a county-owned right-of-way parking available in front of the building. There will be no expansion of the building footprint, and the interior alterations will not have any physical effect on the surrounding environment. Here is kind of a small version of the floor plan. Down there at the bottom, you can see where the side block is, that is toward, street-facing side, and the front door there in green. And you can see just off to the right side there, the entrance where it will join to the current market, Olive Crush Provisions. And before I give you any type of recommendation or discussion, I would like to note that I have changed or amended SEQA findings in the resolution and added two sentences at the end of the findings, which, or evidence, which read "there will be no physical expansion of the footprint of the existing structure", and the change does not, change of use does not change the parking requirements for the parcel. The interior alterations will have no physical effect on the environment. Any questions?
No questions, anybody?
I just, you would comment that I like your changes.
I figured you might.
I got hooked by, in the staff report, the sentence "the current market will remain in operation, the proposed bar will be in expansion", and that threw me for a loop, and I got off on a sidetrack, but I think your amendments have taken care of that.
I actually looked up the other exemptions, and it seemed that there's another one that talks about conversion of existing space, so this seemed to fall pretty cleanly within the intent of the categorical exemptions.
Yeah, I mean, the majority of the changes are literally interior redesign and plumbing, two of the very first things mentioned in 15301A. So that would be the reasoning why I went with that one.
So with your new sentences at the end, your, the last sentence that you first put in is gone now, right? The interior partitions, plumbing, and electrical conveyances?
I just tacked the new sentences onto the end.
I think it might be good to just take that examples section out because we're not talking about interior partitions to the existing market, and...
Right.
It just looks...
Okay, yeah.
Are we ready to hear from the applicant?
Yes.
Is the applicant here? I thought I...
I am here. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, hi, this is Christine Molton, and we have Olive Crush Farms. It's a small farm in the Burson area, and we have just a little something about our market. We opened October 1st, and we started out just antique furniture. And what I really wanted to do is do something positive to help other businesses. So that's kind of a part of our business, is helping promote local commerce. And so we have added quite a few local makers to our lineup and have such a large customer base, it's very supportive. And, you know, when we moved over to Sweet D with our market, because we needed a bigger space, I think using the other part of the old historic Valley Springs garage, it has a lot of character to it. And, you know, I was just thinking, what else could we do to really support Calaveras County and our commerce in our local economy here? and our commerce in our local economy here in Valley Springs? And that was to give the people something that they have to go somewhere else for, and that is local beer and wine tasting. So a lot of our local folks have to go to Loda, have to go to Murphy's, they have to go to Sutter Creek. Why can't we have something like that locally? So that's kind of where the idea sprung from. And we consulted with a lot of our customers to ask if this was going to, this was something that they would be interested in. And, oh my gosh, the response was just phenomenal. So I'd like to thank you guys for considering the conditional use permit, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Ms. Molton, this is Tim Ladish. Will the, I know there will be a door with access to the market. Will the door to the sidewalk also be open for the bar?
Yes, they will. They will both be open at all times. And we will have somebody on staff at the tasting room as well as at the market.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions?
Yes, I do. Ms. Molton, you said that the hours are going to be within local businesses in the area. What is the operation hours you plan on having?
Okay, our current hours of our market are Thursday through Sunday, 11:30 to 6:00. With the opening of the tasting room, there's going to be a minor alteration in the hours. So both the market and the tasting room will share the same hours. It is still going to be Thursday through Sunday, 11:30 to 6:00 on Thursday and Sunday, and 11:30 to 7:00 on Friday and Saturday. So that way, folks, entertaining people from out of town have a little better option to bring people by for a nice visit.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for Ms. Molton? Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. I'm not seeing any public comment. Thank you. Are there any further questions for Ms. Molton? Let's close the public comment portion and see if there is any further discussion needed on this item or any recommendations for the resolution.
I'll just make a comment. Being real familiar with that intersection and the businesses there, because my wife used to own Tango Salon, which is right around the corner. But we've frequented the businesses there, and it's always nice to see that they've been able to keep some businesses going in that section of town. And this market, if you haven't been to it, is really a gem. Really nicely done, a charming place to go. And I have no doubt that their expansion will have a similar feeling to it. But personally, would be in favor of giving them the permit that they need just based on the quality of what I've seen in the market. So that's just my comment.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I have a couple of suggestions on the resolution. Under the CEQA findings, under number one, it does, it sounds as if we're citing to a section of CEQA itself, and we should just put the word guideline before the word section in that finding. And then, under the evidence, I would suggest we cross out Class 1A in the first sentence. It just says, so it would just say the project qualifies under the exemption, which consists of the operation maintenance, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
I can do that.
And that with the, with the other changes that have been proposed, the elimination of the current last sentence and the addition of the two new sentences. I think this, I'm ready to make a motion when anybody else is.
Let's get a recommendation. All right, and recommendations. Staff recommends the planning commission adopt resolution 2020-015 as amended, approving conditional use permit 2020-013 for all of Crush Farms provisions.
I move we adopt the resolution as amended.
Second.
I second it.
Trent's audio is a little slow, it's holding him up from jumping in there. Let's go ahead and pull the-
Yes, it does.
Well, we'll go ahead and ask you first, all in favor, Mr. Fiorino?
Aye.
Mr. Ladish?
Aye.
Mr. Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Plotnick, aye. And the motion carries for zero. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
And Peter, you'll be handling-
I'm sorry, Peter, because it's the CUP, do you want to do the appeal?
Oh yes, thank you. If this action is final, unless the appeal is filed within 15 calendar days for the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. Item number three, 2020-071 zoning amendment for Russell Irish. And Peter, you're up.
Yes, I'll be taking this for a FATU. Unfortunately, she is no longer working with us. She got accepted to grad school and is starting at Berkeley in, I guess, next month. So let me bring up the PowerPoint. My computer seems to be working a little slowly today. There we go. So this is a zoning amendment for Russell Irish. It is located at the, on Green Ranch Road outside of Mountain Ranch. It's a proposed rezone from unclassified to residential agricultural. This is a aerial description or aerial photograph showing what's around it. It's in the area that was heavily burned during the Butte fire. You can see the, you know, the blackened landscape there on the aerial. It's, as I said, unclassified to residential agriculture. The reason that Mr. Irish would like to do this is to establish a winery. As many know, Mr. Irish has been a winemaker in the Murphy's area for a long time. There is existing 40-by-60 metal building that survived the fire, and he would like to convert that to a wine production facility. The residence on the house, my understanding was it was destroyed during the fire. And the RA zone would allow the agricultural use as a use permitted by right as a primary use. The unclassified zone is an interim zone. We're working on a county-wide rezone to get rid of that and to provide a permanent, more precise zoning consistent with the general plan. The proposed RA zone provides an equal emphasis on residential and agricultural uses. And I want to clarify, that doesn't mean that each parcel has like a 50/50% agricultural and residential use, but the zone itself, county-wide, is for both residential and agricultural use and can be, you know, focused on either one. It's to allow small-scale and personal-scale farming as well as larger residential parcels. Most of the property around the site is from 5 to 40-acre parcels. There's a number of 5-acre parcels to the east and south, a large ag reserve parcel immediately to the southwest, and some other general agricultural zone property nearby. This shows the zoning map. I don't know if you can see the orange parcel lines very well, but you can see there's two larger parcels to the west of the property, a lot of smaller 5-acre parcels around it, and then some, there's some RA parcels further to the east as well as general agricultural parcels in the area. As we're going through the county-wide zoning amendment, we're looking at probably most of these smaller 5-acre parcels around in this area here will likely be RR parcels. But at the request of the applicant, we're processing this zoning amendment. The general plan designation is Rural Transition B, which is a 5-to-10 acre density permitted zones within it, RR, RR, and RM, which is the rural industrial zone. And here's the general plan land use map, and you see the, this is all the agricultural resource production area here. Rural Transition B, recognizing the existing lotting pattern, working lands here. So it's primarily residential agricultural uses in the general vicinity. We feel this is consistent with the general plan based on the policy statements in the plan as far as the desire to utilize land productively, improve the economic climate for the county. There's several goals and policies that support this finding to retain, expand, attract businesses and industry, encourage entrepreneurship that's compatible with the neighborhoods. We prepared an initial study, negative declaration for this project. It was circulated last month to July 7th. We only received one, I would call it substantive, but it really isn't, comment letter from the Department of Toxic Substance Control. What it really was, was a form letter, you know, standard comments about doing additional investigation of, you know, toxic residue on the property. We felt that that really wasn't necessary, given the the future use of the property, or the past use of the property is primarily residential. And during the Butte fire, all of the parcels that were damaged were cleaned up and certified as a part of the cleanup operations. So that was the only comment that we received on the negative declaration, other than just sort of standard no comment letters from other agencies. We received no comments from the general public on the negative declaration or as a result of the notification for this hearing. So in sort of conclusion, if this is approved, it'd be consistent with the zoning and general plan. It feels compatible with surrounding area. The use of the property for the winery and vineyard would reduce potential for future fires. And the zoning and general plan would allow for small-scale agricultural operations. Do you have any questions?
Well, first, Peter, the next time you have any contact with Ms. Samuel, please give her our congratulations and best wishes in her graduate studies.
I will do so.
And is there, there are some idiosyncrasies in the initial statement where the checkmarks don't quite go with the comments and et cetera. Is that anything we need to worry about?
No, I mean, it's unfortunate, you know, in 36 years of doing this, and probably, you know, 30 years as a supervisor, you know, that's a very common mistake that has been made. You know, usually we catch those and correct them. For whatever reason, those got missed this time around. The substance of the initial study and negative declaration is the discussion itself. And I would be concerned if we had said no impact, and there was an impact, or vice versa. But the difference between less than significant or no impact is, you know, really sort of semantics. I think that while it's certainly cleaner, this isn't a substantive error that, you know, we would need to recirculate the negative declaration. Thank you.
Are there any further questions for Peter? Then let's go ahead and give the applicant a chance to speak if he's here. He's not. Okay. So apparently we won't have any questions for the applicant. Then we will give the public an opportunity to speak to this item. No pop-up comment? Thank you. We'll close the public comment period, bring this back to the commissioners for further discussion. Questions, recommendations?
I have a couple of recommendations on the resolution. In the first, whereas, we need to change A1 general agriculture to RA residential agriculture. And the second, whereas, we've got two, two times in the same sentence where the words is located. So that after APN 021001051, I have a comma and then cross out that is located. And the only other thing I found was on, on page two, paragraph number two. Down second line from the end, there's a, there's a period that's thrown in after the word and that doesn't belong. And not, not knowing that Commissioner Wooster wasn't going to be here, I didn't recognize this as much as I might have.
It's true. I rely on you guys to correct that punctuation and spelling errors. Are there any further questions, suggestions? Are we ready for the recommendation?
Yes. So the staff recommends the planning commission adopt resolution two thousand twenty dash zero one four, recommending that the board of supervisors adopt the negative declaration and approve zoning amendments. Two thousand nineteen dash zero seven one from unclassified to residential agriculture for Russell Irish at APN zero two one zero zero one zero five one.
And that's as amended, right?
As amended, yes, thank you.
Anybody else? I don't want to hog all the resolutions here. I recommend that.
Here we go.
Peter, what was the resolution number that you stated?
Twenty twenty dash zero one four.
Okay, I thought I heard something totally different.
That was the application number.
Oh, thank you.
I'll, I'll move that we adopt this resolution as amended.
Second.
Yeah, Mr. Fiorino, would you like to go first again? All in favor? Need to unmute yourself.
I don't know how that happened. Hi.
Mr. Lattish?
Hi.
Mr. Henderson?
Hi.
Ms. Plotnik, aye? And again, the motion passes four zero. And is there anything we need to add to this one?
No, this automatically goes to the board for final action.
Thank you. So we're gonna get Amber up here to speak about item four, San Andreas Pope Street and Safe Routes to School Gap Fill Plan. Looks like Kevin is also here and Jeff.
Okay, my apologies. I shared my screen and then couldn't find my unmute. Can you hear me?
I can.
Can everybody see the, the screen okay?
Yes.
All right. Well, good morning commissioners. It's great to see you again. This, my name's Amber Collins with the Calaveras Council of Governments. And we're excited to present this plan to you today, which is a product of about a twelve month process. This was a coordinated effort between the county, the COG, the community and the San Andreas Elementary School. And as you probably recall, we were just here on short time ago presenting the Valley Springs Plan to you. The county and COG received a grant or two grants in the same year. And we worked on both projects concurrently, which is why you're seeing these so close together. But this one focused on studying further the feasibility of a multi-use pathway along Pope Street and Santa, Pope Street and Lewis Avenue here in San Andreas, which has been a longtime community need and has been in long range plans for a long time. So this was really an opportunity for us to work with the community to further develop this project. Do you want to recognize the project team? Gina Cathen with the planning department, Robert Packenger and Joshua Pack with Public Works, and Kevin Shorter with Caltrans, who I think is on the line today. And then our consultant staff, who's led by Green Dot Transportation Solutions and GHD who facilitated the process and the technical analysis. Also just want to quickly thank the San Andreas Elementary School staff who participated throughout this process and Principal Dan Myers, who was a really great partner in this project. And the community who participated, particularly those who lived along the corridor. So I'll introduce and hand it off to Jeff Schwein with Green Dot Transportation Solutions. I also see Stephanie Allward is here. And they'll be presenting a brief presentation to highlight the process and the project. And then we'll be available after the presentation for question and answer. Take your way, Jeff.
Right, very good. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Great, thanks, Michelle. Well, it's nice to see you commissioners. Thanks for having us do this presentation. Thanks to Amber and Caltrans helped, who helped fund the project here. And I'm just going to run through this brief presentation and tell you the specifics of what the community mentioned in the project outreach and what the conceptual designs sort of landed on at the end. And, and then like Amber said, will be available for questions. So this is the project area you can see up on your screen here. And basically it includes Main Street, California Street. But the primary routes with the longest spans of improvements would be Pope Street and Lewis Avenue. You can see some of the origins and destinations here on this map. But we do have more detailed maps in the report. And this, this shows the government center sort of at the terminus, the southeastern terminus of our project, which ends at the, at the intersection there. And then the northern terminus is Main Street just past San Andreas Elementary School. So Amber, would you mind going forward one slide? Yeah, so, so understanding this project from the beginning, like Amber said, it's been in the works for a long time. People have continuously reported safety challenges with walking and biking on Pope Street, around the elementary school and on Lewis Avenue. There's a clear lack of bicycle and pedestrian connectivity between Mountain Ranch Road, Main Street and all of the residential areas that make up that sort of section of San Andreas. So the main goals of the project are to help improve safety for bicycles and pedestrians and to help mobility. So there's a lot of folks in San Andreas who are underserved. They don't quite have access to cars. They need bicycles. They need their feet as primary modes of transportation. So this project is for everybody in the community to just help mobility, help connectivity. And it's been recognized that, that Pope Street is a major corridor for, for activity. So go ahead and hit the next slide, Amber. Okay, this is just sort of detailing the scope of our project. This is a planning project. The next goal is to jump into funding acquisition and engineered design and environmental work. So I like to do planning projects where we get to the end and then there's not another planning project to do. You don't like to keep planning. So we, we hope that this, this report and this project conclusion is, gets the project to that state where we can move into implementation. We did quite a bit of stakeholder outreach. We had surveys for the parents and students at the elementary school. We had surveys that were available to the community. We got quite a few results on those and some really good feedback. We had community workshops and we had pop up events. So we really did engage the community and we got feedback. What they told us was that there was a lack of connectivity. There was a lot of high speed traffic on Pope Street, particularly in Main Street. They told us that the intersections were, were dangerous for, even for in a car, but also especially for bicycles and pedestrians. So all of this sort of culminated to our project team to where we develop conceptual designs to help improve the mobility here and the safety. We presented these findings and the concept designs, a couple of different alternatives to the community. And what we landed on, and Amber, you can move on here. Okay, this just is detailing the existing conditions that, that we found. And is, you know, these are some of the, the foundation that we built the conceptual designs are. Were the lack of sidewalks, lack of bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure and safety challenges at intersections and along the whole corridor. Go ahead, Amber. Here's some images. You guys are very well aware of the challenges here. One in particular is right near the elementary school with that one way section. Others are obvious spots where people like to walk, but they don't have facilities, so they're off the pavement. Go ahead, Amber. And then some other challenges here. You know, when we're developing projects like this, we really need to make them accessible for folks with disabilities. And, you know, seniors with motorized scooters, things like that. Go ahead, Amber. So here are some of the items that we did. One of the things that we, that did really get a lot of traffic to our website and to our surveys was we did a door hanging to every resident within the project area, every household. And then the student and parent surveys and information that we got from the school is really important as well. Go ahead, Amber. Okay, so yeah, just what I stated before were some of the findings. And one thing that I forgot to state was the, the poor lighting and visibility. And this was part of the development of the conceptual designs where we would address these issues in those. Next slide. So, so here's the proposition, the proposal that was taken to the community. And from the expert point of views from the engineers at GHD, from my team and from comments coming back from the community and certainly from the county public work staff and planning department. Was a, you know, in a rural context like this, we don't just want to throw sidewalks at everything, which would be more of an urban type of design improvement. So what's been working really well in other communities is a, it's called a class one, but a multi-use path. So basically it's a separated path from the roadway. We keep it on one side because like this corridor and other corridors, typically in rural areas, you have a lack of right of way available to develop on both sides of the road. But if you do a multi-use path, okay, here we go, Amber. With a six to ten foot wide or six to eight foot wide path that could allow for mobility in both directions on one side of the road. We've done some right of way analysis along the entire project area. And this will fit in most areas. There are some constraints where we would need to go down to the minimum of, of five feet to address some utility issues. But this is the proposal to put a multi-use path along one side of Pope Street, Lewis, California and Main Street and provide true connectivity. As you can see on the map here with the blue dashed lines. In addition, we're proposing safety improvements for walkers and bikers at all of the intersections shown on this map. And certainly, like I mentioned, the pedestrian lighting, which, you know, when you're talking, the term pedestrian lighting means that it's not shining up in the air. It's not a big cobra, you know, light that opens up the entire intersection to, to light. It's basically a low level light that shines just down on the path. It's, it's, it's bright enough for a pedestrian to feel comfortable walking at night, yet dim enough that it doesn't bother residents and doesn't affect driver's ability to see the road. In fact, it improves it if there's a pedestrian or bicycle around. Okay, move on there, Amber. So one of the alternative sections of the project that we explored was the section of Pope Street between Lewis and Mountain Ranch. You guys probably know that there's a topographic challenge there. There's a hill slope that comes down to Pope Street on the north side. And so we did explore an alternative of bringing that multi-use path sort of up on the slope. And that was accepted by the community. They really liked that. And so that's one of the alternatives that once we get into the environmental analysis and the development of, of our funding streams, we'll figure out what the best environmentally and cost effectively, which, which alternative to use. Okay, Amber. So I, you know, when we propose these plans, we like to have a pretty clear implementation and a funding target. So the, the most obvious program for funding this type of project is the active transportation program. That's a California specific program that utilized, utilizes some Senate Bill One funding as well as some funding from the federal highway bill. It's a pretty robust program, but also it's very competitive. So our main goal with this report was to position the project to be competitive in this program here. So there is a call for projects right now. Applications are due on September fifteenth. So the development of this plan being very fresh and all of the information current, a robust community outreach program, the concept designs that fit the active transportation program. We've, we've set this project up for a competitive application effort. And I believe the COG is gonna be helping to develop application for funding for the, for the project. The project was pretty expensive depending on what types of improvements were determined to be the final ones as far as those alternatives go. Anywhere between three and I think eight million dollars for the whole project. And we did do some sort of phasing of the project that could kind of align with the available funding. So that's the project and the plan. The next steps for this would be to, this plan will go to the board of supervisors and the commission for adoption. And at that point, the plan and the project would be ready to seek transportation funding through the active transportation program or any of the other transportation funding streams and programs that are available to the region. So that's the conclusion of my project or the presentation. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to be here to answer them. I also want to recognize Stephanie Allward, staff for Green Dot Transportation Solutions. She's been very instrumental in the development of this plan. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, please, Tim.
First, I was very impressed with your, as you put it, robust outreach to the community. And I'm also impressed and somewhat discouraged. And I'm also impressed, somewhat discouraged, by the response as far as the number of people who came to these meetings. I think this is a great example of a project that has, could have a great effect on the community, San Andreas. And yet you have meetings with people with 14 people showing up or 17 people or whatever that luckily, from my point of view, they seem to reach the right conclusion. But I think there's a lesson here that with your robust outreach, people ought to pay attention to these sort of things and come to these meetings. Because all it would take would be a little organization of people who want to drive their cars on the sidewalks to put a damper on this whole project. I do have a question about, back in October of 2017, the Planning Commission approved a San Andreas State Route 49 Commercial Gateway and Corridor Study, which at least shares some of the same intersections as your study does. And I'm wondering, I presume, and maybe Peter can bring us up to date as to what's happening on that one, that it's still trying to get funded. And I don't know how you coordinate between the two projects and if there's any variation. I know the intersection by the government center was one that was going to be changed there, and I'm not sure that the changes are the same as in yours. I just curious, how do you coordinate these, you know, various projects that might have overlapped?
Sure. Great question, and thanks for the compliments on the outreach. I'll address a point there really quickly. Like you said, it's hard to get people to get engaged and come to the meeting. That's where I think a lot of the surveys really come into play because if somebody's not comfortable coming to a meeting, they can provide input through the survey from their couch or wherever. And in fact, I think 14 people at a meeting. I've seen, I've seen community meetings with no people. So I was kind of pleased with that. But anyways, just based on the amount of responses, we're happy with it. And certainly, a lot of times you get the same players coming out, advocates. Or, but we feel like we did reach a lot of the folks who we wouldn't normally. So as far as the integration with other projects, the State Route 49 project, we actually kept all of our concept designs off of the state highway because there were some improvements that Caltrans has planned on the state highway for especially particularly for ADA accessibility. So we kind of went right up to their improvements and conformed to what they were proposing. So the 49 study, the projects that came out of that, and our study are very well meshed together. As far as Mountain Ranch Road, the county has a project right now at Pope Street and Mountain Ranch Road that is in development. So that involves that entire intersection to be reconfigured, and it will consider the movement of bicycles and pedestrians through that intersection and connecting to the sidewalks and the path that goes up to the library there. So we have integrated those. Yeah, go ahead, Amber.
I'll jump in too and just add to that. In the San Andreas Corridor Plan, we always knew the Pope Street Corridor had a future connect, you know, bike peg connection. So that was always kind of included in the overall vision. This plan just further developed the feasibility of that pathway. But back to the San Andreas 49 Corridor and where that stands, actually, it's had quite a bit of momentum here recently. The county currently has a project, which is an initiation study before environmental along the whole corridor for all of those improvements. So the county has funding for that, and they are about halfway through with that process. So that's really positive. The other positive that's come out of that project is Caltrans is actually picking up some of those improvements when they're coming through and doing shop projects. So Jeff mentioned an ADA improvement project, and Caltrans is looking at additional funding to expand and help fill some of those sidewalk gap fills and some of those improvements that the community identified along that corridor. So that plan has actually been very successful, and, you know, we're moving forward with a lot of portions of that project.
And I'll just, sorry, this is Kevin, sir, with Caltrans. I just want to add to that. Yesterday, we actually had a discussion with the county and their consultants about looking at intersection improvements on 49. And I referenced this Pope Plan, Pope Street Plan, as a need to potentially look at bike lanes on State Route 49, make connections to the elementary school. So we are aware of both plans and trying to pair them best together. And that was just a discussion yesterday. So it is wonderful that we have these two plans that do make connections.
That's great.
Does anybody else have any questions for anybody? So I just want to compliment everyone on it. I think the website's beautiful, the outreach was beautiful. It's a great presentation. And I actually lived in San Andreas about several decades ago. And that this whole area was a problem back then and kind of a hazard for the kids. It's exciting to see such a nice, well-thought-out proposal for fixing it once and for all.
Thanks, Michelle.
So what is the recommendation here? Are we adopting the plan or recommending to the Board of Supervisors that they adopt this plan?
There's really no formal action that the Planning Commission needs to take, but you could just, you know, adopt a motion to recommend approval. We don't have a formal resolution or anything for you on this. Something that ultimately will be approved by the board and the COG board as well. But I think that if you feel comfortable with that, just a simple motion to recommend to the board to approve the plan would be sufficient. Just wanted to point out that this type of plan is exempt from CEQA. And so we'll be filing a notice of exemption, you know, when the board takes final action on it. So there's no real need for findings or anything like that at this point. So you can either just say thank you very much, and we'll pass it on to the board. Or if you felt, you know, that you really want to give a, you know, thumbs up to the board, you could pass a motion that supports adopting the plan.
So we ought to listen to the public if they have something to say.
Yes, we're gonna see if the public has any questions. Can we go ahead and get that up a net?
Yes.
Is an opportunity for the public to make comments or ask any questions of the project team? So while we're waiting, I just heard recently that the Active Transportation Plan may be prioritized, or the funding may be prioritizing rural projects and that some of our complete streets and connectivity plans might be in a more competitive position this round. Is that true, Kevin?
I can comment on that. Yeah, we've been involved in the development of the latest Active Transportation Program Guidelines with the California Transportation Commission. And there has been a very strong rural voice. In the last cycle, Cycle 4, there was only 10 Active Transportation Program Grant Awards for rural agencies in California. And so what they were doing was prioritizing really large projects that they call them transformative. And so they had 10 projects that were just, you know, millions of dollars each. And so the voice from the Rural Counties Task Force and rural counties, folks who had submitted applications from rural agencies was, hey, our little sidewalk gap closures, our safe routes to school projects, these are just as important as a big pedestrian bridge over a freeway in a rural area. So the CTC really took that into consideration. And they actually did quite an effort of coming to rural communities and actually seeing some of the projects that were about to either submit a application in Cycle 5 this cycle or seeing the projects that were submitted in previous application efforts. And it was really impressive, and I think that voice was heard. And I think we'll see some real positive results for rural communities in this cycle.
And I'll just piggyback off of what Jeff said. We actually did have California Transportation Commission staff come here to Calaveras and do some site visits of this project and the Murphy's project. And they were really excited about the Pope Street project and thought it was a really good ATP project. And they even mentioned it being a really good potential transformative, what they're calling it, project because they felt like it really would transform this community and make the critical connections. So we're really excited about that potential, and hopefully we'll be competitive.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing any public comments.
Okay, so commissioners, would we like to give a big official thumbs up? Or just say thank you?
I think we should give an official thumbs up because I think this is, it would be transformative for San Andreas. And it's very encouraging to hear that it's not just pie in the sky. It may actually get funded, and we may actually see these improvements, which would be a great addition to the community. And I just want to thank the consultant and CCOG. CCOG seems to be in the middle of everything that's transformative in the right sense these days. So I would, I would move that we recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve this as the plan.
I second that.
I third that? Okay, Commissioner Lattish?
Hi.
Commissioner Fiorino?
Hi.
Commissioner Henderson?
Hi.
Commissioner Plotnick?
Aye.
So we would all love to let the Board of Supervisors know how happy we are with this. Thank you, everybody.
And thank you.
Thanks so much for the opportunity.
We'll be working with the COG to get this before the board as soon as possible to try to make that September submitted deadline.
Thank you. And that brings us to commissioner reports. Does anybody have anything they'd like to report?
Not I.
No.
No, me.
No.
And Peter, is there anything that you would like to share?
Just two things. One is the board on Tuesday adopted a resolution that allows for a outdoor operations permit process so that businesses, restaurants, tasting rooms, shops, can operate on either sidewalks, parking lots, in some cases even in the public right-of-way, depending on safety concerns. We've tried to develop a simple process. We met yesterday in Murphy's. Michelle was there, supervisor Callaway, the fire department, building official, public works director, walked Main Street to see how that might work where safety concerns were. We'll be working with other communities as needed. The permit process is available. We hope to make it pretty much over the counter so that businesses can operate successfully within the constraints of the Public Health Directives and other safety concerns such as fire protection and access and those kinds of things. So that's underway. A little bird told me that it's someone's birthday today. Michelle's laughing because she knows who that is. So I just want to wish our chair happy birthday. The last thing I wanted to talk about was continuing under this format for the Planning Commission meetings. Our next meeting is three weeks away. It's, I know it's a little challenging, but given the uptick in infection rates in the county, I'm comfortable in continuing with this, you know, Zoom meeting until, you know, we see a slowdown in infections, you know, county-wise as well as statewide. But I want to put that out there to the commissioners as what your thoughts are. I know it's, you know, it's a little challenging at times holding these meetings this way. The board is meeting in sort of a hybrid process where the board members are in the chambers, the public and staff are zooming in. I believe the next meeting, they will allow some public participation from the audience. A seat is started to be put up between the audience area and the dais. I'm not sure that we're really set up in quite the same fashion as the board is to do that. And individual commissioners may have, you know, concerns about exposure to the virus. And so I just wanted to lay that out there for you as a possible, you know, discussion of how we want to conduct our next meeting.
I'm all for keeping the Zoom meeting as a 79-year-old male at risk. I want to stay safe.
Brett, do you have an opinion?
These Zooms, I'm not, don't feel strongly either way. Zoom meetings seem to be working quite well, I mean relatively well under circumstances. I don't have an issue continuing this way. And if you guys, if the county chose to hold the meetings in the chamber, I don't have a feeling of, you know, not attending there, so.
Trent?
Yeah, I'm fine. Just let me know where I need to be.
Mr. Cooperative. Yeah. I, I agree that I don't feel strongly, but I do think this is working. It's a little awkward. I think as long as we have relatively routine business, though, that this would be the prudent way to continue. If we have a very controversial item, I think we will need to talk about how to really enable the public to get their comments to us.
Well, we'll review the webpage and make sure that, you know, the ability to send documents to the commission is, I mean, we've talked about this for a while now. And I mean, I think the public is able to do that. It may not be as crystal clear as some would like it to be, but we'll make sure that we'll, you know, we'll try to reach out more to provide sufficient access.
There's a statement on the page that says if you need to send attachments to use your personal email account, but it doesn't include what the commission's email or the planning department's email address is. That, I think that's all it would need is just a hyperlink there.
Yeah, we, we'll, we'll work on that.
Okay, everybody, is there anything anyone else would like to share before I say I do? On the Murphy Street Plan?
We can say happy birthday. We won't try singing it, though. That'd be loud.
Thank you.
Not gonna leave now, isn't that?
It's okay. And no blowing out of candles either right now. Thanks, everybody. Have a great day. Bye-bye.